I apologize for the length of the personnel matter, but we tried to get it as quick as we could. Again, I apologize for it. We're gonna go into our business portion of the meeting. We'll do revenue and finance. Mr. Patrelli, or Mr. Morela, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under revenue and finance, number five, general fund accounts payable. Enter four of our general fund accounts payable checks. The first batch includes checks 106735 through 106785, and three wire transfers amounting to $580,829.43. The second batch includes checks 106786 through 106819. Thirty-four checks amounting to $111,000, $111,001.36. I move the general fund accounts payable checks be approved as presented.
Second. This is Patrelli. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number six, repository tax sale approved. Rocco Arino has submitted a bid of $501 on a property located at 730 Wompa Avenue that is currently being held by Lawrence County in a category known as the Repository for Unsold Properties. I move that bid be accepted and the business manager be authorized to submit the bid acceptance form to the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau.
Second. Ms. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number seven, approved signatures. I move that Mr. Mancini be authorized as an approved signature on the general cafeteria and outdoor reserve fund accounts at the Y S B event.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Patrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Morela. Personnel education, Ms. Patrelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number eight, resignation assistant principal. Mr. Mark Frangial, Assistant Junior Senior High School Principal, has submitted his letter of resignation effective July 18, 2014. I move the resignation be accepted.
Second. Ms. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number nine, resignation boys head basketball coach. Mr. Anthony O'Beal, Boys Head Basketball Coach, has submitted his letter of resignation effective immediately. I move the resignation be accepted.
Second. Mr. Morela, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Patrelli. Properties and transportation. Yeah, Ms. Panzera.
Faculty request. The Lincoln High School cheering boosters are requesting authorization to use Howling Stadium to the concession stand, press box, restroom for the annual Powder Puff Flag football game scheduled for Saturday, October 18, 2014, immediately following the JV football game scheduled for that day and concluding after the final Powder Puff game scheduled at 6:00 P.M. I move the request be approved.
Second. Second by Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Panzera. Student affairs and athletics, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number eleven, ambulance agreement in your folder is an agreement with Pennsylvania Medical Transport to provide ambulance service for athletic events during the 2014-15 school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Ms. Panzera. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight under student affairs and athletics, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Recognition and communications. I don't believe we have anything tonight. We'll move on to new business. Any new business?
Yeah, there's one here.
Okay, go ahead.
Cheerleading camp request. I move that the JV and varsity cheerleading squads be authorized to attend the UCA Slippery Rock Cheer Camp July 31 through August 3, 2014 at Slippery Rock University at Milcoast to the district.
I have just read questions about this. I had a couple of phone calls from some of the parents that are involved with this, and this camp is something new for the cheerleading squad. And I did ask Mr. Frangial to look into it and make a recommendation as to allowing this or not. They, I guess, in the past, I think it's been ten or fourteen years, they've always brought, they've always come here. This year, for some reason, she's decided to try to take the camp girls to camp, which is an overnight camp at Slippery Rock, making compasses a weekend, and it pays a large cost incurred to each of the girls, over $200, out of pocket, not to mention that she's requesting them to buy mandatory clothes to wear at it. I just don't see that there should be such a cost that was not presented when these girls signed up for cheering or went to the cheering. This is something that was extra, and I think that it could be brought back into town, into the school, and this cost be deterred. Also, we have safety issues. This wasn't, we have no idea how they're getting to camp. There's also a male cheerleader. This is an overnight. We have fourteen to eighteen-year-old girls staying overnight at a college. We don't know anything about how they're staying there, where they're being kept, who's the chaperones. I mean, we're liable for these kids, and this is, this, I don't feel was properly addressed, this hasn't been properly addressed to the board. There should have been more thought brought into this before this is here at our, in front of us now. I'm not sure if any of you knew of all the upstairs.
No, I didn't.
So I recommend that this is not get okayed. We have a male cheerleader too.
Well, could we just request more information from the sponsor and see what she has to say to these concerns? And if she can't address these concerns, I'll see how they get.
Well, Mr. Frangial, did you get a chance to speak with her yet?
I think the biggest, the biggest problem the administration has in knowing the board and where you guys stay on those things, the out-of-pocket expenditure on the students. You guys have stated in the past that you don't want them to be paid to participate, or paid to play. If this is a mandatory camp for the girls, that seems like what it is. Kind of gonna open it up down the road, it's true, right? So, this was a voluntary thing? That would be, you could decide however you wanted to, but when you put the word mandatory attached to it, you open up that Pandora's Box, I guess.
So it is mandatory?
Yes. I think beginning of the year she met with the parents.
So she didn't tell them about this particular camp? This camp just came up? This camp was always brought here in-house? So this extra cost that's being associated with it, and this extra clothing that's needed to be purchased, and we have a male cheerleader now, so?
You have a parent that wants you to care.
I'm the vice president of cheerleaders. That's not why I'm here tonight, but I can maybe answer some of your questions.
Okay.
Although I'm not comfortable speaking for Karen Stellner. So if you have anything specific, she might be able to.
Yeah, no.
But the male cheerleader will be staying in the male dorms. This has always been an out-of-pocket expense. It is more now because it's at Slippery Rock than it was when it was brought here. However, as a parent, we still paid almost $200 for our children to attend the camp here. And we paid that ourselves, the school has never helped fund that.
Well, I understand that, but the parents that I spoke to said that it has never been this kind of a cost associated with it.
It is a little bit more. It's seventy-five to a hundred dollars more than it has been in the past.
Because they said.
But it's always been a great cost.
If you have overnights now, this, where the camp was in.
Well, there was no need to have an overnight when it was here.
Right, and you're encompassing a weekend where some people, it's interfering with other functions that they had had because this is not something that was planned from the beginning of the year. Am I incorrect?
No.
This was just brought up?
That is incorrect. That was introduced to the parents at the welcome tea, which was in April.
And they said this particular camp at Slippery Rock? Because I have minutes from that meeting and it never says anything about that.
Yes.
Because I have the minutes, and it does not say the camp was Slippery Rock, $200.
You can ask Karen.
Well, I'm just telling you, I have all that documentation here because, like I said, there are a few parents who have contacted me. No disrespect to you or to Karen.
No, that's fine.
I feel that this could be kept in-house and the cost be greatly low. $200 is a lot of money, especially now.
It would actually still be $200. It's more than that now because of the.
How can it be more to have somebody brought in?
Because the clothing is an additional, no, I'm sorry. It's more now because it's at Slippery Rock.
Right.
It's $200 to go to the camp with the additional fee of clothing. When it was here, it was a hundred dollars with the additional fee of clothing.
So it's a hundred dollar increase?
Yes. And parents were made aware of that in April. And several times after, at board meetings, we said, if you have a concern, please bring that to us now before we sign a contract. We've had all the children sign release forms, provided insurance information.
Who's staying, who's staying with the male?
The coaches are staying. I don't know the situation for the male. He's staying in a male dorm, so I assume there are male coaches staying. We don't have a male coach in August, so he'll probably be with a coach from another school. But Karen could probably tell you more.
Sorry, Ms. Panzera. This is a letter from Karen Stellner. It says, "To whom it may concern. I was informed that a formal request was needed to be turned into the school by Mr. Frangial. I did get approval from our athletic director and principal when we chose to attend the camp at Slippery Rock instead of paying gold medal and holding camp there." I think she means here. "They were unaware, I assume, that this letter needed to be turned in. I did ask if anything else needed to be done. I am sure it was accidentally overlooked since the school is not funding this event. My parents and boosters are picking up the cost. The deposit has been made for the dates of July 31 to August 3. The senior high girls are extremely excited to return to the tradition of the UCA Slippery Rock camp that Edward City High cheerleaders used to always attend. Thank you sincerely, Mrs. Karen Stellner."
And, Mr. Morela, why did that stop? Because I was told why that camp stopped. Because the kids got in trouble drinking at the dorms. And that's why it was discontinued, is that correct?
That was years ago.
That's when it stopped, though. That's why it stopped.
However, this needs to be approved tonight. I have five members here, and I'm pretty confident.
I'm not going to approve this.
There's not enough votes here to even approve it, just to be practical.
Can we just make it not mandatory?
Well, that was one of the other things that the parents had mentioned, that it was mandatory, and they had asked if there was another camp or another way.
Yeah, I know you're getting into micromanaging coaches, decisions, sponsors, but I understand what you're saying, there's not enough votes to approve it.
We, but we don't even know how these kids are getting to camp. That does not, I mean, if this is a school function and it's mandatory, there should have been some, we should know how the kids are coming and going because we are liable for them while they're there.
If we don't vote, the kids aren't going, right? Do I understand that correctly?
Well, unless you're getting us from meeting. We'll have a meeting before then to get approval. I'm just saying it's not, it's not fly vote to approve it tonight.
I'm not trying to be, not to be hard. They need to follow the same rules that everybody else. We need to know how the kids are getting there, who is supervising them. There are safety issues that are involved in. I don't know why they would not have told you you needed board approval to take our kids anywhere outside of the district. There needs to be board approval. I mean, that's nothing that's new. Not just in the district, I suppose. I mean, that is, that is the case. I mean, those are just our policies. Sorry, but we need to follow them.
Well, it looks like we're gonna end up having a July meeting again. So if we could get more information on this, and hopefully we'll have a full board here that we can make a decision. If that's all right.
So we table the motion or?
We table it tonight, and we'll bring it back up and reconvene at July. Hopefully we'll have more information. Is that fine with everybody? Is everyone?
Okay.
Anything else in our new business?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm sure you guys haven't had the chance to read my letter yet, but I kind of brought this up at the end of last meeting. And I know it's a sore subject to talk about, but I do think it needs to be talked about. Mr. Lloyd sent in his written notification of retirement at last month's June meeting. And it says in the contract that he, I'll quote from the contract. It says, "Provided the school district has not terminated this agreement for cause and provided further at the superintendent, A provides air vote or written notification of retirement."
Ms. Morela, I hate to interrupt you, but this is a personnel matter.
Oh, is it? The superintendent's contract? Even if it's online, it's a personnel matter?
To discuss.
Well, it's involving personnel. Yeah, it's, it's entitled to one of the contracts.
Okay, then can we talk about this in dead to then, Mr. Cortez?
We could, yes. All right, we'll go, anything else?
Can I have some, Mr. Zola?
Go ahead, Mr..
I passed out some information from Alex, the people who are doing our masonry restoration.
Yes.
This was placed on my desk. I got it at 6:30 when I got here, but I had been aware on Friday that the contractor was identifying some issues. There are two quotes there. The second page is a $12,264 quote. That is to replace some brick, three or four rows of brick, on eighty feet and twenty-six feet of the wall that runs to the perimeter of Lincoln High School. When they started their tucking process, which I mean is they cut out some of the mortar, as they cut that mortar out, they saw that it crumbled, and they were literally able to pull bricks out by hand. So they've identified these two sections that need to be re-mortared and re-tucked. They've given us a price of $12,264 to do that. Now, we had a $20,000 amount for unanticipated costs. We've spent $4,000 of that. So for this particular phase, we would still have the money in that unanticipated cost. Page one is something that brought to our attention on Friday. He indicated he would get pricing to us, which he did this, this evening. And if you look at the pictures, and I tried to make them in color, but it just wasn't working out. The chimney looks to be in very poor disrepair. And he's given us a cost of $26,879 to repair that. And what will happen, these costs will go to the architect. The architect will go back to the contract in the bid process to verify that the pricing is per bid, and we can move forward with the project. The position I guess I'm in is I need to kind of be able to tell the contractor and the architect whether they're to move forward with this or not. Even though we may have that second July meeting, they're gonna kind of need to know very quickly. But the other thing I want to bring your attention, in the capital reserve fund, I don't think at this point we have $26,879 to cover it. I'm hoping when we get to the end of the fiscal year, which was today, and I start to do the final calculations, that we have surplus in the general fund that we can transfer to the capital reserve fund. One way or the other, whether that surplus is transferred to the capital reserve, we would be using money on a one-time basis. So it's fund balance or it's capital reserve, but it's approximately $27,000 that I would need your authorization to spend beyond what's in the capital reserve fund.
Mr. Zora, do we need the chimney anymore?
I can't answer whether they can just demolish it and do away with it. I mean, I could ask that question. I'm not sure what purpose, what comes out of that chimney, or how they would retrofit it to make it look good. I don't know. But it clearly is in disrepair to the point where it needs to be addressed. So I'm kind of looking for some authorization to move forward.
Is there any way we could find out if we actually do need the chimney yet?
I call architect, sure.
If we don't need it, there's no sense in fixing it.
It may take a while to study the parents for doing it.
That's what I'm thinking.
Could be like Karen down in Placada.
I've had a number of people ask me if we're doing that.
I can, I'll call the architect and we'll get a communication out, and then kind of get a poll from the board that's okay. And then whatever, whatever feedback I get. I mean, I would imagine that there's gonna be some demolition costs, obviously. We're still gonna have to cap it somehow. So there's gonna be a cost, whether you repair it.
And will it have a cost for boiler system?
I would think that that's what it is, just like a chimney.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It serves a purpose.
That's what I'm saying, it's serving a purpose.
Yeah. I'm thinking that it probably is. Even though we're not burning the coal anymore, there's still our boilers down there.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Right.
So I mean, how do you want me to proceed?
I would say if there's still a purpose for it, we need to fix it because it's, it's a risk.
They could just take a pot and flip it, if that's what you want to do to the building. Actual brickwork and aesthetic work, but yeah.
And I'll get additional information, I'll communicate back. But I guess that first part of the project, that first bid, that $12,000 is located over there.
Yes.
That's all I know.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions, actually from Mr. Keeley. I was talking to Mr. Lloyd earlier this month, and he were on vacation. I guess fifth grades this coming year is changed in the way the kids are going to be switching classes?
Just a little bit.
Okay. When was that decided? I'm just curious, because I would have liked to have been notified of the change. And I'm just trying to get an idea of, again, this is new this coming, this coming school year, correct? Why was this change made? And I mean, what's, what's the reason for it, I guess?
Do you want to be notified as a parent or as a board member?
As a board member, because when I have parents coming up to me telling me, oh, did you know this was going on? And I don't know anything, I kind of feel a little upset about that because it's our school district.
There's a lot, there's a lot that goes on on a daily basis that, you know, in my mind, that's, that's what I'm assigned to do, is make the decisions. The rationale to make the change that I made came from the common core, and integrating those standards into grades three through six where these tests are coming about. Basically, the only change has been that now I've got a teacher who's teaching every kid in fifth grade writing. I've got another teacher who's teaching every kid in fifth grade science and social studies. So essentially, the pods are intact, but for half of one of the periods, the kids flip-flop between one additional teacher. So basically, a kid in one pod is going to a pod, a teacher in different pods for forty-five minutes a day.
Okay. So instead of them having three teachers, they have four for fifth grade. But then they go back to sixth grade and have three again.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm just kind of looking for some consistency because I was also aware that this past year in third grade, that three of the teachers switched classes, and the other three third grade teachers did not. They taught itself in their own classroom. And I just don't understand why we're not consistent in each of our grade levels.
Well, not everybody, not every kid has all the same strengths, so try to put the maximum spin on the education for all the kids. Try to put staff in the position to make the most kids be as successful as possible.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't get that at all because I.
I'm looking at strengths of teachers.
Okay.
And I'm trying to make good things happen.
Okay, forgive me, then you're saying that these teachers aren't qualified to teach all the grades, all the subjects in their grade?
That's not what I'm saying at all.
You're saying they have strengths in certain subjects, so you're letting them do that? I mean, I'm just looking at it from a parent and from a school board member. It's, you have now a kid going into third grade, and depending on which teacher you get, the one kid could be switching three times, and the other kid has the same teacher. And then they go to fourth grade, and they have two teachers. And now we're going to fifth grade, they're gonna have four. And then they go to sixth grade, and they have three. That's a lot of difference depending on who you get. And one kid could go and have one teacher in third grade instead of three. You don't, you don't see that that, that a parent could have a problem with, well, my son or daughter only has one teacher in third grade, and this one has three. I mean, are you giving certain kids an advantage by having three teachers and the other ones only having one, or vice versa? Do you see where I'm coming from? I feel like there should be consistency in our grade levels, that each, each grade level should be the same, and that each kid coming in should have the same opportunities and being, being taught the same way. I mean, it just doesn't seem fair to me that there is such an inconsistency throughout three through six. And I'm just, I'm asking because I, I don't know if the board even knew that there were such inconsistencies with the elementaries. Were you aware of them? The, the different grade levels? And how they were taught? I'm not sure if you guys knew that. Were you aware of this, Mr. Zora?
No.
I think you talked about some restructuring for kids who may be experiencing structure.
No.
Not, not in that situation, no. Just, again, trying to make the best decision, putting people in the places where their strengths are or their passions are, and making the best things happen for all the kids in the district. That may seem inconsistent, but for me, it gives every kid the best opportunity to succeed in every subject the best that I can do for them.
Well, again, I just would like to see consistency. And I know for a fact, because my son has come up through these grade levels, that some teachers have taught all the way into fifth grade math, and others have not. I mean, I understand your job is hard, and I'm not trying by any means to do it, but when, when parents hear these things, it's upsetting. And it was upsetting to me that, that these other kids are moving forward because their teachers feel the need to push, and these other teachers are not feeling the need to push. So I mean, it always depends on how your kid interacts with the teacher. But when you're, when you're having these, these kids and each grade level having this difference of whether you have three teachers, two teachers, I mean.
See, those are, to me, those are different things. I've observed my twenty-four classroom teachers. I don't have a problem with any of them and their practices and what they've done. So what they're doing and the way that they're handling their curriculum and the way they're going about their business, that has not been an issue whatsoever. So to me, those are two very different things. And I've been, I've been in all the classrooms during lessons.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying from a parent's standpoint that I feel that there's a difference whether your kid has three teachers or your kid has one teacher. And going into third grade, you're talking about one kid getting three different teachers and having three different aspects and three different learning things, and a kid having one teacher. And I think that there's a, there's a, there's a difference between that. And as a parent, as a parent, that I feel that that's unfair, that certain kids are getting this and certain kids aren't getting this. I, I'm just, I'm wanting to make the board aware of this because I was just made aware, but I didn't even realize that third grade did that this year because they didn't do it the year before or two years before. It wasn't like that.
The previous year, they had two teachers.
They had two teachers. So it's changing, I guess, and.
Right, to make what's best for kids at the time the best that we can do. That's what I'm trying to tell you, is I'm trying to make the best students, that students maximize their achievement based upon what we have available to us. And if I think this teacher is gonna do a great job teaching math, and this other teacher is a reading specialist, I want to expose as many kids as I can to that reading specialist as possible. So that's why I made the decisions that I made.
Okay, but if you feel that this one teacher, like having a reading specialist, why isn't it that way for all third grade? Why aren't all of them getting there?
It's not state required, I mean, they're all certified teachers.
But again, I get that, but you see what I'm saying? You're saying that it's good enough for certain kids, but not for the others. I mean, you can see my point. I understand what you're saying, but you can see my point. And I have parents coming to me with concerns about it, and I'm just addressing it. And then again, my son came home, and he never really mentioned to me about fifth grade with the new, new alignment. And I was a little, I had a couple of parents call me and say, well, did you know that they were doing this? And I'm like, no. And then I went and asked my son, well, fifth grade, how many teachers did you have? And he's like, four. And I'm like, oh, okay, well, that's different. And I just wasn't aware of it. So I, I think something that's, I don't feel that that's some everyday change. I think that's kind of a major change for our school district to change. The way fifth grade is being taught that there'll be four teachers instead of three, that the pods have changed. And I would like to be notified for things like that. I mean, I, I wish that the board all knew that there were that many discrepancies throughout the grade levels because I think that that's something that we need to be aware of. And it's not just me because I have an elementary kid, child. But as a board, when these parents call us, I'd like to know what they're talking about But as a board, when these parents call us, I'd like to know what they're talking about and not be caught off guard.
My preference would be if a parent calls you, for the, you forward that call to me. That would be my preference, to be honest with you.
Well, that's fine. And I can have them call you, but I should still be aware of it. I should know that this is going on. And I'm supposed to know what our school district, how we're teaching.
Honestly, I feel like that there's no trust right here now. Like, I feel like I'm getting paid to make these decisions. And I'm just, I'm doing it for the best of the kids and the best of the district. And if you don't trust that decision I make, I apologize. But I'm doing my best on a daily basis.
I'm not saying you're wrong.
And you're welcome to come in anytime you want.
I have.
But I make, absolutely. And, you know, I make a lot of decisions a lot of times. And we do a lot of different things with scheduling, et cetera. And to report all of those things to everybody all the time, it's going to be difficult.
I'm not asking for everything. You know, I can't believe you don't feel that changing the fifth grade schedule in our district is a little more than just a little thing.
Once again, it was forty-five minutes a day.
It's another teacher. It's a different schedule. And then they go back to sixth grade, back to three. We're talking about changing consistency with these children throughout grade levels. And that's what my concern is. So I'm not trying to be disrespectful by any means. I'm just trying to say that this change was made and we weren't made aware of it. And I would like to personally be made aware of things like that. And I also want to make sure that the board is aware that we do have these discrepancies between our grades. And I think it's something that we need to discuss. I'm sorry that I do. And I tried to come to you on vacation and I mentioned it to Mr. Lloyd. He was supposed to get the message to you. I apologize.
And I did, and I talked to him.
Okay. Because I certainly didn't want to catch you off guard. I did, you know, go and speak, tried to find out some more information prior to. But I do, I believe that that is a little more than a little change.
I just agree, but okay.
Well, I'm not sure how the board feels about that. I would like it to be brought up for discussion on-
I wasn't aware of it, but there's a lot of things we're not aware of. And again, that's why we hired professional educators to do the job. I'm not even sure even how the discussion's going, but they can't tell us everything.
No, but that's not-
You want a phone call every day saying, "Is that, we can do that?" I understand that you think this is some major change, but again-
You don't feel this is a major change?
... questioning everything an administrator does and we have the wrong people in charge.
Mr. Cortez, that's not at all what I said.
I don't blame you on that, right?
Not at all what I said. That's not what I said. So you don't, I'm asking that the board-
If I was sitting in Mr. Keeley's position, that's the way I would feel. I'd do that line of questioning. I was being honest with him. I would feel like you're questioning everything that I do. I can't, you want me to call you every day? And again, you know, I get phone calls every day too about different things.
Okay, and I'm bringing this to the board's attention.
Normally, what I do is refer them to the people they're talking to. So-
I did.
Nine times out of ten, that's where they get solved. If I have a phone call about teachers, I get to talk to the teacher. I mean, that's-
Mr. Keeley was on vacation, I did do that. Thank you. But again, I'd like the board's opinion on, I'd like your opinion on the inconsistencies between the way the kids are being handled. Do you not feel that this is something that we should discuss?
Well, I know, me personally, I would like to see, I'd like to see consistency throughout the grade levels. But at the same time, I do have trust in Mr. Keeley and what he does as to developing a curriculum, curriculum and setting forth a curriculum to the best advantage of students, to the best possibilities that the teachers can do for those students. Not to say that inconsistency is a good thing. But like I said, I do trust Mr. Keeley. He's been an administrator now for X amount of years. And I believe that he is honestly trying to do the best for the students with what we are presented with.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Marlowe. We hired Mr. Keeley to do his job and I believe that you're doing it to your fullest. And I appreciate everything that you do do. I know it's not an easy job that you have. But I think that he's looking out for the best of, best interest of all students.
So you don't have any concerns with the differences with the way that the grade levels are being handled? None?
Personally, I don't. If that's the way he feels that it should go, that's like Mr. Cortez and Mr. Marlowe said. That's his job, that's his call.
I agree with them also. And you also don't want to be notified then if there is such a change as in a difference of the way the curriculum is being handled in a grade level? Because that's not an everyday occurrence.
My assertion, my older kids went to school in Virginia. And they taught pods then. And we're talking in the early nineties, late eighties. They taught in the pods. They used the teachers to the best of their abilities. Some of my kids went through the grades. They had four teachers. Normally, a pod down there was four teachers. Every kid from third grade up would go to a different, for the core classes. And then if they needed special, they had an additional period where they would go for special. If they needed more reading, they'd go back to the reading teacher. But it's a much larger school district. However, I think that Mr. Keeley's interests are the kids and the benefits of the kids. And I don't want to be the one to tie his hands if he's going to have our kids succeed.
When I say tie his hands, I was asking them about being notified of the change.
I think notifying us of everything that happens in building-
I didn't say everything.
Well, where do you draw the line? Where do you decide? He thinks something is not important, you feel it's highly important. How does he know what your feelings are on an issue?
Anything that's going to change a whole school year, I think is something that we all need to be notified by. That's not a daily thing. I think anything that's changing, that's going to affect a school, a whole school year is something that we need to be notified of.
I personally don't think it changes a school year. I think it's a principle using as teachers to the best of their abilities to make our children succeed better than they possibly could otherwise.
Well, it still changes the school year and the format of the way they are. Obviously, I have kids in elementary school. My son is still there. So I'm getting these phone calls from the parents that are my friends. So when they call me and I don't know that this is going on, I mean, that's concerning to me, being in the position that I am. So I guess maybe if you all aren't as interested in the elementary as I am, then maybe you can just email.
That is very- That's when you need to have the people that are contacting you contact Mr. Keeley.
I'm sure they have been. I know several of them have emailed him about certain items.
Is this true, Mr. Keeley?
Not to my recollection.
I'm not talking about the changing of the fifth grade. I'm talking about other things that have been brought to my attention. But, yeah. But they were coming saying, "Oh, what's going on with fifth grade? Why are we doing this?" And I didn't know we were doing it and I have a fifth grader. So that was where I would have liked to have known a heads off. Next year, things are changing. Because I wasn't aware and I have a kid going into fifth grade. And I know that other fifth grade parents felt the same way. Because they were unaware that things had changed, that we've had a change in the way that the kids were going to be taught. I'm not saying it's a bad change, but I'm saying it's a change. And the same way with third grade, I have parents who have called me and said, "You know, why did my child switch and this one didn't switch?" So I didn't realize it was even going on. So that's why I'm asking.
Well, I still put my trust in Mr. Keeley.
I have all the faith in him.
Well, I believe that his decisions that he's making are in the best interest of the kids. If that's the way it needs to be, then that's the way it needs to be.
I'm not disputing that. I'm simply saying that anything that's a major change, I would like to be notified so that I am aware when people contact me. And I've stated that to Mr. Lloyd also, things that have happened that, you know, they contacted me. And I feel like, you know, there are certain things in the running of the school district that we should all be aware of so that we can address the problems when we are asked.
Well, I'm in disagreement with that because we'd be getting phone calls twenty-four hours a day for different changes. I, like, again, I say I rely on our administrators that we have here. We put them in place. And I think that they're doing an outstanding job. And I don't believe that they, we need to be informed of everything that goes on.
Mr. Roy, I'm not asking for everything that goes on. That is not-
More or less, that's what it's coming down to. You want any changes that occur, you want to be notified of.
And if we involve in changing of the school year, yes. And I don't feel that that's an everyday change. So yes, I do, I would like to be notified of that. I'm not saying things that are done on a daily basis. So don't put those words in my mouth. It's not what I said. That is not at all what I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else that we need to go under new business? Go ahead, Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Prendle, thank you for your time here. Very unfortunate the situation, but we understand and we wish you the best. I did receive a couple of phone calls for four minutes. I have to say, we're going to their decision, calling them, we're getting good.
Thank you.
What we felt about, we're losing the good man. It's unfortunate the situation that came to. We understand your decision, we wish you the best. We're good with the timing here.
Thank you very much.
Whatever decision, the direction we go in, we hope that you can go.
And Mr. Spitz, we're in a lot here and we have a lot of great connections with kids and faculty members of administration. You have a lot of good people here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prendle.
Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have any other new business, we'll go back to the board, to the visitors before we go into an adjournment or an executive. We'll start back up front. Any other comments you have to make or? Any questions?
Just to the members of the professional staff who took the time to come here and express their concerns, that we will do everything we can to see that. We want your involvement in all the future decisions.
We greatly appreciate that. We feel that the more input that you have, the better decisions can come with that. We greatly appreciate that consideration.
We appreciate your input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. I do appreciate it. Hopefully, you'll be here next month. Who will?
Give a date then?
Yeah, we're going to make a date for July.
Yeah, we need to set a date. We're meeting in July.
It's very likely that this is going to be Mr. Lloyd's last meeting.
Well, from the union's perspective, we would like to thank Mr. Lloyd for all the time and the open door policy he's had given us. Anytime any issues come up within the district, we always try to handle them first with Mr. Lloyd. And he graciously had an open door policy with us. And we were able to resolve a lot of our issues just sitting down and talking to him. So we greatly appreciate that. And we hope to be able to continue that with Ms. Manzi as well. Thank you.
And I enjoyed working with CBA.
Thank you.
You and that Sam. Hey, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Manzi.
Do you have a date, Mr. Manzi?
Mr. Zerron's have gone two weeks.
Let's not blame Mr. Zerron here. How long's it going to take you to accept applications? I mean, you're two weeks out on that anyway, right?
Yeah.
So then you go through your initial interview process, so you're looking?
Do you want to, can it just wait till our first meeting in August? When is that meeting? That is our August meeting, is it?
I thought we wanted to have something done for cheerleading camp, for cheerleading camp.
Yeah. Because I can't, without approval, they can't go.
In the past, we've had the secretary.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
We could have the secretary fill in, Nancy, for Mr. Zerron. We've done that in the past.
So this week, I will not be here nineteen through twenty-six.
We're not going to get nine.
Right, I know we're not going to, yeah. That's me. I don't know if anyone else is busy that week.
If we don't get, that probably may have to have six to approve. If everyone's in favor, approve the cheerleading camp.
What day did you have in mind, Mr. Manzi?
Well, we almost left the last week of July now, like the thirty-first.
We got to meet before that, with the cheerleaders.
What is that?
The day thirty-first.
Thirty-first, there's-
What day is the nineteenth?
Saturday.
Saturday, twenty-first, that's my last week of July.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth of July.
Is it a month ago?
The third, Thursday.
I'm available.
You said twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, maybe, if I remember.
It's Thursday.
About seventeenth, the week before that. Then I have time for applications and stuff like that.
We'll go two weeks to the leverage.
Or more or less, we'll be forced into the week of November.
Would it be possible? I'd ask Mr. Prendle, I would ask him. I think you may want to have the whole board, kind of board members, discuss the cheerleading camp before it's approved. But I was going to, would it be possible, all the other members? I think they should be informed of all the concerns that Mr. Prendle had.
So I'm just saying, the administration is not recommending this because it's mandatory money that's being put out and how they're being transported?
Are you saying call the board tonight?
No, we can't do that. No, I, we can't.
I wasn't trying to say it.
They have to be informed of all the concerns, either, before, and I can't say that.
That's a good point.
I think the timing is actually very difficult for it to get approved before it. They're going to get approval pretty quick.
Was anybody here for it?
If it's not mandatory, I mean, I don't see a prob- I've gone on team camps to colleges and things like that throughout my sports career. I mean, I understand there's associated costs with it, but if it's not mandatory, I think I could, I could give it.
But right now, it is mandatory.
But right now, it is mandatory.
We still don't know how they're being transported up there. Who are chaperoning and what the male's position is and how they're keeping him?
Can you get us this information, Mr. Lloyd? And somehow get it brought to all our attention via phone conversation or whatever, just to keep the board informed of what's going on? Then we can make our decision.
It's hard to track.
We should have, we could have had this last month.
Right, they should have been.
Between Monday and Thursday, we could have all the information.
Right.
Cut it down.
But the fact still remains, as Mr. Prendle says, if we allow this, then we're allowing mandatory money. And that is something that we have said we're not going to do.
I don't want to do that. I have, I mean, I have reservations about it.
I mean, that, and the fact that it used to be something they did and then it was stopped because there was drinking and there were problems. I mean, I just think it's just not-
We had cross-country one, of course, several years ago for a camp. All those fears were justified.
Kids will be kids. We all were there.
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
But I just don't see that it's a necessary evil.
She says she's a down payment on the, all right?
Yes.
Well, maybe it'll return her. I mean, I'm sorry that this has come up, that, I mean, they're-
I wish we had known about it last month.
No, I'm glad you brought it up.
Their policies, I mean, she should have known that she had to go through us. And again, you know, when you get into mandatory and costs associated, they already have costs associated with everything.
See, I knew about the camp, but I wasn't told that it was mandatory.
But there's a big difference bringing the camp here and having it handled during the day for three days and going to Slippery Rock from Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I mean, there has to be a larger cost associated with overnights and-
Doesn't matter, can't make a decision. Doesn't quite matter.
But is anybody for it? I mean, honestly, with it, there being the cost associated with it?
I don't believe that, uh-
You're against pay-in play?
I'm not in favor of being mandatory.
Yeah, I'm against that. I have a better idea of who's on, chaprains are going to be there.
The transportation up and the male.
Yeah, there's all the questions we have.
But if we're- We don't even know who has clearances and who doesn't have clearance, who doesn't have clearances.
But if we're going to stay true to, we do not want mandatory pay-in play, then it has to be just, it's clear that this is not going to be something that we're going to accept. I mean, let's let them make the decisions and make the things, the choices they have to make and get them started so they can still have camp. I don't want them not to have camp. But that's not fair to them either. I mean, I want to see them have camp. I just want to see it be fair to all. And be done accordingly next year. If they want to try again, then they can do it ahead of time.
Right, I do want to thank you earlier, yes.
And get everything proper and clearances and how they're going to stay there. And if you even want to okay it. If we're seeing problems with the cross-country team, we're going to put a bunch of cheerleaders, fourteen, eighteen-year-olds up there? I mean, we have another responsibility to those children to keep them safe. So I mean, worry about making a meeting for something that we are all against for pay, with pay, if it doesn't seem fair, let me just put them off for the next three weeks.
Doesn't matter, I mean, I'll be able to outbid much of that.
Just go back to the August meeting and have that to come to mind.
If we don't have a meeting, that means the cheerleaders do not go, right?
Not in July?
July thirty-first.
Even then, they're not going to be able to go?
No, so I just want to make sure that we're clear. Because right now, I'm a little unclear about what's going on.
Well, I think what we need to decide is, are we going to allow this to be a mandatory thing that these kids are charged $200 to go to this mandatory camp? Because now we're getting into pay-to-play.
No, I'm not going for mandatory. I'm not going to open the camp, learn something for everything else.
Right. And none of the other things are set in place, the chaperones and clearances and this male cheerleader now. So, I mean, this camp...
Well, we don't know that they're not set in place. Ms. Stellner's not here to tell us what she has said.
True.
So we can't assume that she hasn't done it. But we don't know what she has done.
Correct. But the pay-to-play and mandatory, we know is true. And that's the biggest thing that the board is set that they do not want.
So I'm sure as soon as she gets news of what we've discussed tonight, she's going to decide, okay, it's going to be voluntary. And then she's going to ask for us to approve it once she gets back, how they're getting there, who the chaperones are and where the boys are going to be sleeping. I, to my understanding, she wants to, this is what she wants to do. She wants to go on this trip. She wants to go to this camp. I'm sure with, we say that it can't be mandatory, she's going to say, okay, well, it's going to be voluntary. Go, can't go, can't go. And we're still going to go because she wants to go. That's the way I...
But if it's not mandatory, then there has to be another camp held.
Excuse me a second. Ms. Pixa?
Yes.
Is the camp mandatory? I mean, we're going back and forth like we know...
Well, in the past, it has been mandatory when it's been held here. But I thought I made this clear. You still had to pay, even when it was here, to almost $200 out of your own pocket.
But is it mandatory for Slippery Rock?
It has been stated as that, but because, I can't speak for the coach. I don't know if she would be willing to change that. I...
But that is what the children, the cheerleaders have been told?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
They have had to pay in the past.
Yes, the boosters are paying a third of the cost and the parents are getting their rest. Yes, sir.
We don't have recommendations of new administrators either of the male, so...
So her choice is to make it voluntary or dumped up?
Well, I guess that's still...
That's my recommendation. And also, including the other questions that were asked, how they're getting there.
Chaperones, the male, if they have the clearances, how they're getting to and from.
We don't know that, but in the past, Karen Stellner has always been very, very responsible with the girls as far as achieving. I find it hard to believe that...
I would not let my daughter go if I did not trust her.
Exactly, right, yeah. So I'm sure she has all of that in place.
Just like you said, with the cross-country team being in Slippery Rock, I'm sure they add all their clearances too and stuff still happens, which is something we have to decide. We make, the school board took it away before because of problems. So are we going to let this start again?
Well, I know from my personal experience, I've gone to two different camps, basketball team camps. And I've gone IUP twice. And with the basketball team. And we didn't run into any problems, I know that. And, surprisingly, I don't, yeah. Yeah, if it's voluntary and she gets back the questions, the concerns that we have, then...
Chaperones, transportation, male cheerleader, and clearances.
Then I'm for it because I can't say that I would not want to go on this team camp too. It's a good experience. I know that team camp for me, it's a team bonding experience. I understand they could have it here, they could have it at Slippery Rock. The mandatory thing is just the only thing that I'm kind of concerned about.
Yeah, that's gonna, mandatory is gonna open up a camp.
Yeah, my team camps weren't mandatory. I know that. I mean, I paid for it out of pocket. I mean, I think it was a hundred fifty bucks, something maybe more than that. I don't know. But it wasn't mandatory. I just paid and I went and played because it's just, it's associated with camp.
Right. Well, it's the same as what Mr. Keely's told there. Well, I'm in agreement with that. I'm not...
Sir, I can go on with, you know, with all the other stuff. I have confidence in Mrs. Stellner. And Mrs. Pixa is one of our teachers.
Are you a chaperone?
No, because I'm not the coach.
Her daughter goes, so I think...
The coaches are chaperones.
Just, how many coaches are there?
There are two coaches, and then there are the UCA staff members at Slippery Rock. But again, those are specifics that you'll have to ask Coach Stellner. I'm just in the boosters.
How many staff members do we need per student?
You need one per every twenty-five students for a field trip.
Does anyone get us that information, Mr. Lloyd?
J.B. and varsity. The junior high is not invited.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go into adjournment for executive session. Thank you, everybody, for attending the meeting tonight. Need a motion to adjourn? Motion's out. Second, Mr. Morella. Meeting adjourned.